Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Yarmouth Select Board of December 19th, 2023. This is a hybrid meeting which requires that the following notice be read into the record. This is to formally advise as required by General Law's Chapter 9, by General Law's Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, in pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and Act Relative to Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency Signed Into Law on June 16, 2021. As extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, the Yarmouth Select Board will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, December 19th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth, Mass. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below, and that public access information is to, so a person if they wish can join on computer or telephone, and the instructions are on our website. First item is announcements. Do we have any announcements?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, that's right. Pledge of Allegiance. That's an announcement. She would like us to do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Dorcas.
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, any other public announcements? Any other things I forgot, Dorcas?
No. We're good.
All right. Public comment. Tom Sullivan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This past week, the airport had environmental study about this expansion they want to do over there. I have one way to describe this environmental study they put together, and I'll be nice. I see the smile. It's a whitewash. It's about the clean. They are going to be doing, what they did supposedly did, a noise study, Part 150. It's done by a computer. There are no noise meters out, no actual single events being taken to measure the noise of the residents of the town. I found the meeting very frustrating. Didn't stay to the whole thing. I left. I've been doing this for over 20 years, and it's the worst I've ever seen. So I would like to, hopefully the board will join in with our town administrator, who was there, with the, I believe, the consultant, the airport consultant was also there. And hopefully you'll hear some comments later tonight when you do administrative items. But this thing, the town should formally oppose altogether. They cannot put an environmental noise study by computer, okay, without actually knowing exactly the noise decibel readings coming from these aircraft. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else?
Let's see, we've got a couple on the board. There's, the first one is Vitos. Vita Morris.
No.
Okay.
Yes, it is. I don't know, I was having a, can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah. What, what happened to your name?
Oh, I don't know. Something different happened. I had quite a bit of trouble connecting with, you know, with you people on this Zoom, but eventually I did, and so it is indeed something that's connected to my name, I guess. All right.
Your new name is Vitos. iPad Vita.
Okay. So.
And I will only respond to that name in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Well, it's never happened before. I don't know why it happened this way, but anyway. You're going to hear from an old curmudgeon on the matter of the, that's on the agenda tonight, the town seal. You know, ever since that matter came up, I felt that the cost of it would be really prohibitive compared to what the aim of the person who was proposing it was in relation to that. And I'm telling you, this is not something that any of the Native Americans proposed or have pushed, and in fact, a pair, a couple of meetings ago, we were told that the committee had sent off, I guess, the proposed seal or something like that, and get, to get the opinion of the Native Americans, and they haven't even responded. So that's about how much interest they have. On the other hand, during that survey that was sent to everybody in town on this matter, I happened to see one response, which came from a woman who identified herself as a Native American and said that the money spent on something like this would be much better spent on educating the children of Yarmouth. Now, how eloquent is that? And I just, the cost that they have come up with, for instance, I'm not so sure that all of the seals in town hall have been even counted. Maybe the other, you know, departments are a little more accurate in what they were presenting, but it seems to me, I think I can think of at least four such seals in and around town hall, whereas I think they're showing only three, but I wouldn't be at all surprised that there are more than that. And so I just, I hope that the board, when it considers what to do further with this matter, will especially take into account the cost involved, and this just isn't, you know, really possible to do in this day and age when we have, people have to remember always $207 million that we are, you know, encumbering ourselves with, and that these, anybody who, any department that comes up, or any selectmen or whatever, and in this case, it was strictly a selectman who was trying to virtue signal to the world for the, for the Native Americans, who are probably, it looks like, they don't even have, they don't want to be, you know, involved in anything like this. So I think, I just hope that all of these things will be taken into consideration when you make a decision what to do about this matter in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, couple more up there. Cheryl Ball.
Hi, Cheryl.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make some comments on last night's Board of Public Health meeting. I know the weather was probably a little bit prohibitive for some people to make it there, so just wanted to kind of summarize some of my takeaways from the meeting. The first point I wanted to make is there was an absence of our state representatives and our state senator. We did not see Senator Sears there, and we did not see Representative Diggs or Representative Flanagan. I was a little disappointed in that, mainly because I know that there has been a lot of discussion, and a lot of people have been very upset and concerned about the TB issue that has been going around, and I know that they have received a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails from their constituents, and it would have been nice if they had attended that meeting last night. Secondly, I wanted to bring up something that wasn't discussed last night, and a couple people have since brought up this topic. One person in our Facebook group and also one person on the radio this morning with Ed Lambert, there was no discussion about the cost associated with all of the tuberculosis testing that's going on. So a lot of people are, you know, concerned about, you know, who's paying for all of this, because we know that healthcare is extremely expensive, and we don't know if that's something that's going to be a burden on our town, or if that's going to be paid at the state level, or however. Irregardless, it's coming out of our pockets, we just kind of want to know which pocket it's coming out of, and how much all of this testing is going to cost. And then finally, I just wanted to comment that, you know, a lot of the questions that we brought to that board last night left unanswered. We all are still curious about this mysterious email that has been sent in to Ed Lambert that he is not allowed to read. We don't know the contents of that email. We don't understand why we're not allowed to hear what's in that email. We were hoping that we would get some clarity on that last night, which we did not. Another thing we did not get clarity on is, we know that the message that's coming from the Board of Public Health is that the risk to the community is low, that we should not be concerned that there are any communicable diseases in our town. However, we did also learn in a statement that was issued by Heidi Nelson from the Duffy Center that the staff workers who were exposed to the latent TB cases that were tested, the staff workers were encouraged to get themselves tested. So if there is low or no risk to the community, then we don't understand why those workers were tested. We did not get an answer to that question either. Another question that we're still a little fuzzy on is the entire process for testing on the tuberculosis. It doesn't seem like a real clear process where as soon as somebody arrives at the Harborside Suites, that they're immediately tested for tuberculosis. It seems like there is a period of time where they're allowed to reside there before they're even tested. There's still a little bit of lack of clarity as to if they're being mandated to get tested, or if that is purely voluntary on their part. We had somebody on the Zoom last night, Dr. Hashin, who was supposed to be giving us a little bit of clarity on that. Unfortunately, there were a lot of words and not a lot of clear understanding of how that whole testing process works. We were also a little bit confused as to a comment that was made last night about the residents at the Harborside. It seems like they're coming and going, that, you know, some have come in, some have left, which leads me to another concern that, you know, even though we might get the all clear that there are no communicable diseases in our town, we're constantly bringing new people in, so to me, that means that that risk is constantly there for us. And then finally, I just wanted to reiterate one point that I made a couple of weeks ago, which is that I still feel very upset that we are not taking care of our own American citizens as well as we are taking care of these individuals. I continue to see many homeless people as I ride around Hyannis, and the medical care that is being afforded to the residents at the Harborside Suites, I'm sure is not being afforded to our own citizens. So those were my thoughts. I just wanted to make sure that I shared those, since I know a lot of people didn't get to attend the meeting last night.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else up there?
I have a Christopher Garen, I believe.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, Christopher, we just see Christopher G E A. You want to identify yourself?
Yes, Christopher Garen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and just echoing what Cheryl was saying, you know, overall, I think it was a good help meeting. The public asked reasonable questions regarding the TB situations during the two and a half hour event, and the board members, the health director, Gardner, and the state medical representatives, they responded to every question, so I appreciate that. I think in the future, you know, given the emergency we're facing, meetings like this are important, but should be done as soon as possible, and not wait, you know, it's been about three weeks from, I understand, late November is when the diagnoses were made. So whether it's latent or not, it's important for the public to know, because, you know, compared to how things were handled during COVID, you know, information was out immediately, and this, the doctor last night from the state said essentially both COVID-19 and TB are essentially, you know, the same threat. And so, you know, given that situation, it should be handled the same way with the public, because I think meetings like this help answer questions, and so that would be good to do in the future. The Duffy Medical email is concerning because Representative Viczaros has confirmed receiving it, but has said he's received counsel, legal counsel. He can't respond unless FOIA is filed, and it just seems like, you know, last night, everything seems okay, it's latent, and, you know, it's not a danger. But if that's all true, why not read this Duffy Medical email, which reportedly says contains more information than is being discussed? So it's just, the communication, you know, the public's part of the team here, and, you know, should be included. Regarding homelessness and cost Cheryl mentioned, National Public Radio reported yesterday about homelessness in Massachusetts, and it's really striking that people are sleeping in cars and in the street, and yet the state is paying up to $10,000 a month, this is NPR reporting, for motels to house the migrants, and, you know, it just doesn't make sense to be spending that much money and not spending it on citizens who, you know, reportedly are perhaps on social security, they're veterans, they're working, and having to live in cars, and yet they're taxpaying. They're paying taxes, and they are getting no benefits, no healthcare, no meals that, you know, that we're aware of, and if they are, it would be nice to hear about that. But instead, you know, the county and the state just seem to shut down on that information and don't want to talk about it. So that just doesn't make sense from, you know, sitting here in the public, why that's a mystery. So I want to thank Cheryl last night. She made a couple of safety suggestions about Harborside. She noticed, has noticed that kids are playing in the parking lot, you know, next to busy Route 28, which seems, you know, dangerous. But also installing a crosswalk there, she suggested, from Harbor Suites to the Stop and Shop Lot would be beneficial and for those at Harbor Suites, but also for the residents and tourists in the summer when it, traffic really gets busy. So, you know, perhaps that's something that can be considered or referred to the proper board. Also, I want to thank the Select Board at the last meeting, mentioning the January 11th, 2024 zoning Board of Appeals hearing that Yarmouth, I guess, issued a notice of violation to Harbor Suites, and the owner has appealed that decision. So that hearing will be held on January 11th, 2024. Hopefully that has not been rescheduled. And also, just finishing up, in the Cape Cod Times, good news, I'm glad to hear that the sewer applications were filed, so thank you for that. So anyways, in short, I think it's a good meeting. I think in the future, though, keep including the public as soon as possible about what's going on, even if it doesn't seem like a danger to the public, I think it's still good to know. And although the videotapes, the YouTube Zoom is wonderful, and the website that you have set up with emergency information is really good, given that this is like COVID, I think it would be good for Yarmouth to be proactive, because people are busy, they don't have time to watch the hearings, and if there's a way to get the information out to the public faster in a situation like this, I think that would be very helpful. But again, thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Christopher. Just a couple of quick points. I came into that hearing on Zoom. I didn't learn a lot, because I've kind of been getting that information on an ongoing basis, the stuff that was discussed last night. But our IT Director, Paul, mentioned to people, and I think this is worth repeating, that all of these Board of Health presentations and meetings, including the one last night, you can access by going into the Yarmouth website, into the Board of Health, and look at the date and get this information. I was surprised, actually, I don't know how many people were on Zoom, but there weren't many people in the room. I bet you there weren't more than a dozen, which really surprised me, because it had, given, there was a lot of publicity on the radio about it. It might be the time of year and people's preoccupation with the holidays and so forth, but I expected that there would be a lot more people. But I think Christopher's point's well taken, that whether the information is, you know, something that's alarming, or it's relatively benign, the best thing is to do is to put it out there, because I think when people don't get information on a timely basis, even if you're well-intended, criticism is going to come your way. So I think, I think that's something that I agree with, and I think we've learned that through this process of press releases and so forth. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Jay.
Jay Gardner, I'm the Director of Public Health for the town of Yarmouth, and I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, those comments. I would like to set the record straight, that since September, September 10th, when the migrant, the migrant program arrived, it's a state program that arrived, we're one of 90 communities that participated. The Board of Health, at each and every meeting, now it's been nine meetings that they have discussed this issue. The community messaging has been seamless and consistent and transparent. The measure of public, of, for public health, the success, really, the measure of success is to engage and educate the community. This board, which has three medical professionals on, have worked so hard to immunize the community, Christopher's point, with good information, right? With good information, you make good decisions. What's interesting is we're talking about transparency and consistent communications. We, the board, this office, actually, health office, found out about this information about tuberculosis, latent tuberculosis, right? It's not a communicable disease. On the 28th of November, with the weekend involved, on December 4th, there was a 25-minute discussion here, four days later, with the weekend. So to your point, Mr. Chairman, the Board of Health has done exactly that. They're to be congratulated and commended. The Board of Health has, at every point, communicated with this board, with the town administrator, and with the community, with the effort so there's good information, because quite frankly, I sat at those meetings in September, and the three points, the concerns were communicable disease, right, schools, and public safety. Those were the three things. There was, you're right, this was standing room only, and I was in the room. And since then, it's a three-month update that we had, and each of those concerns, not one of them has been realized. It's important that the community and this board understands, there is not one communicable disease, not one of the 80, that is attached to the Harborside Suites in Yarmouth, and Yarmouth is to be congratulated for that. Additionally, Superintendent Mark Smith was at that meeting last night, and he answered a good number of questions. The seamless transition of this small cohort, 27, 28, I think it is, into the DUI school, the DUI school is to be commended, what they have done. Public safety, there's only been two calls. We talked about, there's going to be all kinds of concerns, they've never been realized. There's a tremendous amount of fear and concern, and that's not, it's unfortunate, it just hasn't been realized. It's a state program. We're doing the best we can on our part, and who really should be congratulated are the residents of Yarmouth, who consistently, at the meeting last night, a woman stood here and brought me coloring books and children's books for the Haitian children, and I brought them over there today, and I can't tell you the look on their face. Christmas dinner is going to be delivered, gift cards are delivered, people are volunteering over there. Is it perfect? No. There's been a lot of frustration on this board about the communication coming from the state. Yeah, no, we're right with you on that one. I work every day on that. But communication? No. No, I won't accept that. The Board of Health has been tremendously communicative. They have worked very hard to make sure the community is engaged, they're informed, and they're properly protected. There are safeguards in place. Quite frankly, you can't listen, I would encourage all of you, and I hope you get the chance to watch that meeting, you can't walk away with any ambiguity whatsoever as far as communicable disease, the schools, and public safety. We're going to continue to, I don't know how long the program is going to be here in the town, the town administrator, all of the board meetings we have intermittently, he is putting out press releases, consistently, Bob is asking, do we need to get information out? What's the latest? He emailed me today on this. We sat for 15 minutes to talk about this. There's a lot of misinformation and misinforming that's gone on, and it's created a lot of frustration and unnecessary anxiety, and that's not a good thing for public health. So we're here working hard. I have to commend again, the Board of Health, you're very fortunate to have a strong Board of Health here, a good administrator, and the selectmen have been incredibly supportive to us. I hope the residents of Yarmouth understand that. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jay, appreciate it. And maybe periodically, you can come in at public comment and make some comments similar to the ones you made tonight. I remember Bruce Murphy doing that quite a bit through the COVID crisis that we had, because not everybody watches Board of Health meetings. Sometimes people come here and they think they're going to get all the information from here, so it's probably good to have information coming from both places.
Our ratings aren't very high, I can tell you that. Our ratings aren't high, but.
You got to get some commercials.
We're, selling advertising doesn't work for us, but I have to tell you, I hope they would come on and listen, but it's not for lack of trying. Many times, the Board of Health is talking to an empty room, but I appreciate the invitation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Margaret Posa. Put your hand up.
You see anybody?
Margaret.
Margaret?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Margaret, how do you pronounce your last, Posa?
Posa.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, in response to Mr. Gardner's comments, it was an informative meeting yesterday. The one specific question I asked, you know, and it's very nice that people are taking care of the Haitian community, and they're getting the two meals a day, and I believe they're getting the EBD cards and all of that, my question was if the residents of Yarmouth that are living on the streets, or in their cars, or in tents, or in shelters, if they're getting the same. And what I was referred to was a printout, very specific printout, with three paragraphs that they were going to read. I read them, it does not answer my question. So my question stands, and, you know, I will ask either the town or the Board of Health at the next meeting for specifics. Thank you.
Thank you. I do recall your question, and thank you for coming in tonight and public comment.
I think that's it for the big board.
Is everybody out in TV land who wants to be heard, has had that opportunity? I guess so. I don't see anybody. Okay, we're going to move on. The next item is recognition of the Garden Club of Yarmouth. Is it, I don't want to mispronounce someone's name, is it Elaine Fongello?
Fongello.
Fongello? Okay. Fongello, Italian. Fongello. I gotta use my, see, I couldn't spell right, because I had my hands down. All right, so we have a citation that you're going to accept on behalf of the Garden Club. I was talking to our town administrator today. We normally have a conversation in advance of these meetings, just to kind of get on the same page, and we were talking about this presentation, and he was praising the Garden Club for the work that they've done in decorating the town and providing the wreaths for town hall and other places. in decorating the town and providing the wreaths for town hall and other places. And I had occasion to mention to him that in the, in the nice weather, when I come to work, I come down North Main Street and right at the intersection of North Main and High Bank Road. I always see the ladies out there, and in no time, that, that place has transformed. And I've often thought, you know, that I should stop and, and and commend them for the fine work that they've, they've done. And I'm remiss that I, they haven't done that. But I'll have that opportunity, I'll have that opportunity tonight. So we do very much appreciate your commitment to the Town of Yarmouth and all the work you do to beautify the town. It does not go unnoticed. And I'm going to read this citation for the record, ask you to come up and accept it. And if you wish, it's up to you, if you wish to make any public comments, you can do so at the microphone. So it says, "Town of Yarmouth Official Certificate of Appreciation. The Yarmouth Select Board hereby recognizes the Garden Club of Yarmouth for outstanding volunteer service to the Town of Yarmouth. And be it known that the Town extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for the club's 50-plus years of dedicated service, providing scholarships and toolships to Yarmouth High School graduates and college students, encouraging the conservation of natural resources, and by adding to the beautification of the town by maintaining gardens in all three villages." This citation was approved by the Yarmouth Select Board on this 19th day of December 2023. And I've signed it as chairman on behalf of the board.
I would like to say thank you very much for the recognition. We have a lot of talented members in our organization. Unfortunately, a few weeks ago, High Bank, the garden that you go by, there was an accident over there. Someone ran into the garden, broke the irrigation system, knocked our sign out into the street, and the car just made a total mess of the garden. So we've tried to straighten it up best we can, but we have to wait till the spring to get all our new plants in place. But not everybody, I guess, appreciates the hard work we did, whether they were not paying attention or under the influence or whatever. But it was, you know, unfortunate.
My bet's on the other, under the influence.
I think so too, yeah. And of course, Buck Island is our biggest garden. And that is, that is an eye-catching sight. We get a lot of, a lot of positive comments. And thank you once again for the recognition.
Thank you, thank you for all your hard work.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just mention, speaking of the Buck Island garden...
Certainly.
I absolutely adore that garden. And I have had the pleasure of stopping and thanking the volunteers there. And it's amazing how many of them are out there, early in the morning, and on hot days, rainy days, it doesn't matter. And it's like a little piece of heaven, I tell them. And I, I wanted them to know, I go by there and, and have just this wonderful sense of peace every day, thanks to them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dorcas. Okay, we're going to have a license transfer hearing next. Do we have the, do we have the revised notice, the amended notice? Second notice?
This is the revised.
I had the first one, right. So, so the board knows what's going on here. And the first notice inadvertently, the address of the establishment was omitted. So it was republished in the second notice. And we're hoping that's going to be okay with the AVCC. We think it will be. So that's why I'm bringing that to your attention. And, and also for the record to acknowledge that, that's, the board's good with that. With the amended notice being done in that fashion. There's not much that was left out, 559 Route 6A Yarmouth Port. But I'll, I'll read the ad in a moment. If you want to introduce yourself, then I'll read the ad, and then you can make a presentation. And then we'll see if there's anybody in the audience that wants to be heard. We'll go to the board, and then we'll vote, okay?
All right, yeah. My name is Scott Lopes, resident of Sandwich. I've owned five pizzerias in the last 22 years, most of them off Cape. And just came back to the Cape recently and bought the Yarmouth Pizza by Evan. And just wanted to get back and do something local. So we took over in November, going for a liquor license transfer and going to do hopefully some improvements there. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay. So here's the notice as the amended legal ad. "The Yarmouth Port of Selectment, acting as a local licensing authority, has received an application for a transfer of an annual all-alcohol restaurant license located at 559 Route 6A Yarmouth Port. The license is being transferred from J O C A, Joka LLC, Doing Businesses Pizza by Evan, to Stone Lovin', catchy name with an L with an apostrophe, oven, LLC, Doing Businesses Pizza by Evan. The new manager of record will be Scott Lopes, who is this gentleman here. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, December 19th, 2023, at the Yarmouth Town Hall located at 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, December 15th, 2023, at the Licensing Department, or it can be submitted via email at publiccomment.yarmouth MA US. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing." Okay, so is there anything you want to tell us about this application and your experience and so forth?
This will be my fifth license having either beer and wine and all alcohol. So I'm familiar with the rules and regulations and the do's and don'ts.
Do you have a business in Falmouth?
I had one, that was a Stone Lovin' Pizza Company. That was in 2011 and sold in 2013.
So that was yours?
That was mine, yeah.
Because I was talking to town administrator again in prep for this hearing. And he said, boy, that's an unusual name. He said, I think they had a, a business in Falmouth.
Yep, yep.
Very nice establishment.
Thank you.
Did you meet with Sergeant Hennessy? Go through this state, yeah, I see his paperwork now.
We did.
I thought I saw it on, on the online version over the weekend.
Yeah.
I see that you did, okay. And let's see what we got for comments here. You need a certificate of inspection from Building Department. Health Department approves the application. So I think that's all that we have from other, input from other town departments. Let me go to the public quickly, does anybody want to be heard on this? Is that Tom Nick? That's Tom Nick.
Good evening and thank you, Tom Nick and Alan, from the very historic village of Bass River, representing the Chamber of Commerce. We'd like to welcome Scott to our community, and I hope you slice up many slices, so. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you so much, appreciate that.
Okay. Go to the board. There's nobody else in, in the audience? Mark, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Dorcas?
No.
Okay, I don't either. Do I have a motion?
Motion to close public hearing.
Yes, I'd like a move that we close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, do I have a motion to grant the petition to transfer the all-alcohol license?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? No sir.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Don't you like the easy ones there?
Next item is going to be the Yarmouth Town Seal Committee.
I don't think so.
Bobby, you want my hand?
How about the hockey pike?
Are you still unable to get?
Just wait.
Only through the town website. I mean, I can, I can get the documents.
You can get the packet through the town website. Good, okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
See a familiar face.
Yes, one or two, I guess, right? I'm Robert Lawton, I'm chair of the Town Seal Committee. And introduce the members who are here tonight. It's me, Elizabeth Logan, who's our vice chair, Jane Kane, who you may know from another venue, George Slama, Tom Sullivan in the back, Mary Mozlosky, and Fritz Kleckie. So thank you for having us tonight. We're going to do short presentation. The good news is that all of the slides in the packet are not going to be reviewed tonight. So don't worry, it was about 14, 15 pages, we're not going to do...
I like pictures.
I know, pictures are good.
I like the words, I just like the pictures.
And, and we, and we have some, and we have some. But we're going to do three parts. George Slama's going to do a brief history of how we got here. I'm going to do kind of the middle part about what the committee has done, a little summary. And then Fritz is going to describe the recommended seal. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, if George can start.
Evening, George Slama, 14 Lakeland Ave, Vice Chair of the Historical Commission. How did we get here today? A 130-year journey. In January 2020, the Historical Commission's Town Seal Review Subcommittee met for the first time with the goal to answer the when, why, what, and who questions related to the current town seal. And found when, on February 13th, 1892, the Register reports that Yarmouth Town Meeting authorizes the selectmen to procure a design for a town seal. The why, unknown. This authorization was six years before the state required that every town shall provide the use of its clerk and official seal. The what, on February 4th, 1894, the Register reports that a bylaw was adopted at town meeting and includes a description of the town seal. And on January 25th, 1895, the Register publishes the warrant for the February 2nd, 1895 town meeting, and includes the first visual image of the new seal. The who, it is unknown who designed the elements of the town seal. The town seal has substantially remained unchanged for 130 years. The Historical Commission's Town Seal Review Subcommittee's research and findings that the native people's cultural imagery was inaccurate were presented to the Select Board in June 2021, and subsequently in March 2022, recommended that the town seal be changed. At the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, Article 22, establishing the Town Seal Committee with the task to recommend a new seal was approved. The Town Seal Committee has deliberated over the last 15 months with the scope of work as a guideline, and has thoroughly reviewed the research and findings of the Historical Commission's Town Seal Review Subcommittee, considered the research and findings of the special commission relative to the seal and motto of the Commonwealth, and has reached out to town residents and representatives of the Wampanoag tribe for their comments and suggestions on changing the town seal. The committee believes that the recommended town seal corrects the cultural imagery of the Wampanoag tribe and enhances the original historic imagery of the town seal, while providing future generations with the when, why, what, and who of the 2023 revisions to the town seal. Thank you.
Thank you, George. You're in charge of that. So the middle part of our brief presentation, this is the, this is the article that appeared, Article 22, at the annual town meeting of 2022, which was in fact voted. The scope of work, which was defined in the, in the article and then in discussions afterwards, review the current imagery. If we decided to create a seal, to make suggestions on modification, do a draft review and make a presentation. Also, as George said, conducting a community outreach, which we thought was very important. The current Town Seal Bylaw in Chapter 42 describes, and I won't read them, describes the items that are to be contained within the town seal. And as you can see on this next slide, this is from the Historical Commission outlining each of the items and also some of the issues that surrounded the, the images that were created for the seal. Next, we thought we'd, and I think George Slama did a lot of this work. What do the town seals look like in town? Well, they're all different. Each one of these has its own particular thrust or bent, and I don't think any of them really conform to what is required under the bylaw. And the second is some of the department seals that we have, we've gathered together. So on the scope of work in evaluating where we are, we did through the good offices of Mary Mozlosky and her staff, and with permission of the Board of Selectmen, we did in the census last year, send out 18,000 questionnaires. And we had a very good response, 17%, which is, I guess, statistically significant. The Town Seal Committee, and you can see on the top line, you can see that on question one, that should we modify the seal? And 51% indicated, yes, you should do a modification. On question, question two, should it be redesigned? There were different responses on that. But it should only be, our impression, it should only be redesigned to be consistent with what is historically correct, and, which means eliminating... eliminating some of the things you saw in the previous slide with the Historic Commission identified some issues within the current town seal. Using the data created by the questionnaire, Mary Maslowsky worked with Betty Logan to create a, what is called a word? Word cloud. And what this does is it identifies in, when people were responding to our questionnaire, what is, what three words would define the town? And it was, it's very interesting that the number one word was historic. The town is historic, which is true. Second, friendly. Third was beaches. This conjures up what, what the town means to, to folks in the community. Beautiful and then a community. So I think this is, it's significant and may be used by others to show how people feel about the, about the community. And Betty did a, a great job in putting this together, because when she first described it, I have no idea what she was talking about. I said, oh, so it's a cloud? No. Anyway. One of the other issues that was raised was what is this gonna cost? Now, if on the day after town meeting, if the article was passed, we said we're gonna change every single seal in town, the estimate was $145,000. That's not what we're recommending. But it gives you an idea, and I think on the next slide, this is a summary that George Slama put together. The details are in your appendices in the, the larger packet which you received. But this is a summary of some of the costs that would be incurred as we go through and change the patches, the embroidery, badges, et cetera. Over the next, if, if this goes forward, well, even if it doesn't go forward, if you decide to put this on the warrant, our job will be to talk, continue to talk with the town administrator, finance committee, and other departments to fine tune these costs and present to you, here's how we're going to implement it. In many cases, there are funds within town budgets to update and change over shirts, et cetera. And when they do that, if the seal is approved to be revised, at that time, they would make the change over to the, to a new seal, which hopefully is voted. The, the next part, we wanted to talk a little bit about the, the new design. And we're gonna call on Chris, Fritz Kleckie to do an overview. But before I do that, as we noted on the slide, the design has done, has been done by Fritz's firm at no cost to the town. This is significant when we looked at other communities and how much it cost for them to do any type of revisions, even as the process went forward. But Fritz, very nicely, and his firm did the design for us at no charge. Emphasize that. And as a plug to the firm, it is a visual dialogue with offices in Boston and Cape Cod. I won't bother to read the website. It's a little, would be a little tacky. So Fritz, if you could.
Go forward. Where am I? Oh, here. Okay, okay. There we go. Hi. Thanks to the Select Board and thanks for having us tonight. I also am a resident of Yarmouth. We're at 9 Matichees Road, just off of South Sea on the way to Seagull Beach. My wife and I and our daughter. So basically, I just, you know, kind of looking at these two, just wanna give you a quick, like, kind of, you know, design, just the process we went through. And again, it was a great working committee. A lot of this background material was provided by George and Historical Society, which was, made our job so much easier. But basically, if we kind of start with just, you know, this main figure, the kind of Native American figure, which is inappropriate, and the teepee, which we know is, is not correct, and kind of focus on what's over here that's kind of in the background, that's kind of what we focused on. So if we go to the next page, so Point Gammon Light, the end of, you know, Great Island, we kind of brought that to the foreground. We also brought the Two-Masted Schooner, which you kind of see on the wall here, as another kind of key element. And then the main element is this Eastern White Pine, which is kind of key to the Wampanoag creation myth, but also very significant for the history of Cape Cod. You know, a pine that grows in sandy soil. The other things that we've kind of tried to incorporate are this idea of the, the Wampanoag word, "Matichees," meaning big or great sky. This idea of this sky and, and trying to illustrate that feeling. And then, as you kind of look at the background texture that we put there, it, this line work, which is all very hand-done feeling, has almost like a, a little bit of a reference to the striations in Wampum. So again, a little bit of a connection with that. We've kept the rest of it pretty traditional. I think the whole thing with its hand-drawn feel has a little bit of a historic vibe. This was all done in scratchboard, which is a very traditional style of illustration. It's not done on the computer. It's all done by hand. It looks like it could have been done a hundred and thirty years ago. And so, but we've updated things, you know, the, the type, we've kind of referenced the current type, but just made it, you know, so it works, so we can, you know, scale it up, scale it down. It reproduces well now. And we've also kept the, the nautical rope border, which again, I think, like the water, which was one of the key things, the beaches and the Bass River and the, and the bay, are one of these things that connects us to what makes this town unique. And so we've kept this kind of nautical reference to this, this rope border. So those are quickly kind of our ideas. And again, thanks to George and all his background material for this. And so we also, one other thing we did was we, we noticed, actually a friend was at the, the State House and noticed in the Hall of Flags in the State House, there's no Town of Yarmouth flag there. So, oh, sorry, before I get to that, you might be asking where our figure went. And I think, you know, this, this point from the special commi- commission that says the, the Subcommittee decided that design should not include human representation because it cannot represent everyone. That was, you know, part of our reason for dropping the figure. And I think, you know, it's, it's hard to depict a figure accurately and not, it doesn't depict everyone. So that was, you know, if that question came up, that was the reason we did that. But, and then just to, to wrap up here, you know, so as I mentioned, in the Hall of Flags down at the State House in Boston, there's no, currently no Town of Yarmouth flag. It's missing. So we just kind of mocked it up on a, on a flag to kind of show how it might work. Again, this blue representing the sky and the water as a background field, and then just the, the new seal as our, as our primary visual there. So that's it. And we also just printed out here large, I'll just unveil this.
Turn it around for.
Yeah, I think.
Turn it around.
So the people can see.
Yeah, yeah. Please turn it around.
Sure. Well, thank you, Fritz. A lot of work and certainly a great explanation of why things are the way they are. So kind of concludes our comments, there were a couple of things we just ask of the board. One is, at the appropriate time, we'd ask you to place an article on the annual town meeting warrant to see if the voters will approve this revision. Second, we hope when you make your recommendations that after some other discussion, not asking you to do it tonight, but that you would approve and support the changes that we're, we have proposed to you. And third, if the, if the article is inserted, that our plan would be for the next number of months is to do an outreach to the general public, probably doing it at forums, maybe at the senior center, cultural center, maybe at the libraries, just to get people involved and to give an opportunity to ask questions rather than hold everything until town meeting, which we can maybe get a lot of those answers done beforehand, especially on the money and on what the reasoning was for making the changes that we made or proposing to make in the town seal. I would, just kind of closing, is to thank the committee members for the number of meetings. We met once a month for, I think it was fifteen, fifteen months, and it was pretty well everybody came to every single meeting and participated. It wasn't just one person saying, well, here's what we're gonna do, so just vote yes. There was a lot of discussion, none heated, thank goodness. But, but it was in detail and people had a lot of different ideas and we went through those, and I think successfully. And also thanking George and some of the other members, I think Tom, for reaching out to go to, go to the Wampanoag tribe. Also, George went down and talked to department heads individually to try to get the, an idea of the cost of making the change over. And we'll have more details on that as time goes on if the article is put into the annual town meeting warrant. We're happy to answer any questions, if you have any tonight, or we, we'd even be willing to come back.
I'll be happy to entertain questions. Do you have any questions or comments that you'd like to make, Dorcas?
Great job. I know there's an awful lot of work that's gone into that. I can see it. So I'm, I'm kind of assuming then that the white pine kind of takes the place of the Wampanoag Indian to represent the Native Americans.
Excuse me, Dorcas. I think, I don't think that Indian was a Wampanoag, right? We don't know what Indian that was.
Well, it was supposed to be.
Someone from the Midwest.
Somebody that kind of wandered into town in 1892.
I guess.
Okay.
Well, we wanted to feature that as a, one of the primary things, based upon some history that George had, had gathered.
I'm not so sure you could draw a, a figure that's gonna represent Wampanoags any more than you could draw a picture of Irish people or French people or Dutch people.
And I think that was, and I think, Mr. Chairman, that was the reference that we made earlier in the special commission on the state seal, that when there was testimony and we highlighted that, that the tribe, tribal members had said, you really shouldn't have a person, because just as you're saying, it's tough to identify, is that, who is that? Is it, is it a man? Should it be a woman? Should there be some different dress, et cetera? They had recommended, don't have anyone.
And the Two-Masted Schooner, that's taking the schooner that was in the original seal and just giving it more prominent position than the new one?
Right. So, so when we did our research, we, we really didn't have any information, as indicated in my opening comments. What we did from a research standpoint was to try to see if we could, you know, find references back in our history that would give us kind of like an informed decision. And the David Kay Akin was clearly a ship that took a lot of notice when it came up Bass River. And it set records from sailing from Bass River down to New York in seventy-two hours. And it would come back up into Bass River and it would anchor at a packet landing and unload its coal and, you know, so it, it made sense to, you know, indicate that that's probably what the, what the ship was.
Was it built on Bass River?
It was, it was built and launched in 1882.
In the town?
I'm not sure where it was built.
Not sure? Okay. I, I commend you on what you put together here. I think it really looks lovely. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Dorcas. Mark?
Thank you. And my thanks to the committee for all your work. And Fritz, thank you for your, all your contributions as well. Sometimes the challenge isn't trying to visualize, you know, what a new seal might look like. I think your work is very much appreciated. I wanna make sure I understand some things from your recommendations, and I'm just gonna ask some very direct questions. From what I'm hearing tonight is that the town has many different seals. Isn't that correct? You're showing us, I mean, I'm looking at the Water Department's seal. It's very different from the Police Department's seal. And so we have multiple seals. And I'm not sure if any of them actually conform to the bylaw. Is that correct? They do not conform to the town's bylaw on the seal?
You're very observant, Mr. Forrest.
Thank you. So I'm assuming that if there, these recommendations, when they go to town meeting, there probably be a recommendation on a change in the bylaw so that the seal and the bylaw are actually in sync?
Correct.
Correct. And then we would probably want to make sure that each department, somehow there's language in their directing all departments to actually use the same seal rather than each department coming up with their own variation of the Yarmouth seal? Because the, the Water Department's seal does not look like any, the, the tree does not look anything like the other, I mean, all the trees are different. The dress is different, colors are different. I mean, there's just differences all across the board. So we have a variety of seals. None of them conform to the town's bylaw. And are historically, each one of them is historically inaccurate. Does that interfere? Those are your conclusions?
Yes.
I just wanna, I don't wanna be putting words in people's mouths. I need you to just, just affirm that, because that's what I'm hearing tonight.
And that was the conclusion of the Historical Commission Subcommittee, when we went out and found all the different seals. So clearly, it speaks to going forward, having guidelines where nobody down at the department level should be able to make a decision to change the seal, that it should be, you know, controlled at purchasing or in budgeting. And Mary Maslowsky is, is on board with that. I mean, and so clearly, we've been a little footloose and fancy.
So the town clerk would be the seal czar, so to speak?
By law, she is the keeper of the town's seal.
Keeper.
She has the seal.
Okay.
And that's the one expense that has to be, has to be done if there was a change. I think it was seven, seven or eight hundred dollars. That has to be done. That's the town seal. All the official documents are sealed with what?
So conceivably, she could ask, as the town clerk and the, in charge of the seal, she could actually ask everyone to conform to the current, the design, the bylaw, right? And then we, as the Board of Selectmen, would have to be involved in enforcing the bylaw?
Unless the town opted to repeal the bylaw.
There you go. That's the other option.
So in reality?
Yes.
The seal is not supposed to be reproduced without the permission, sorry, Mary Maslowsky, town clerk. In reality, the town seal is not supposed to be reproduced without the, the permission of the town clerk. The town clerk gets to, through the state law, say yes or no. So again, it's not supposed to be used for commercial purposes. It's supposed to be used for town purposes only. So generally speaking, when they show up randomly in a, in a store, there are plenty of communities that have gone and done cease and desist orders so that they are protecting and keeping that seal for town purposes only.
So it's copyrighted? So there are copyright issues, there are penalty violations of state law as well as local bylaws?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanna, make sure that we can establish that for the, for the record here.
I think that also makes the point. I think that also makes the point that if the town meeting decides to do nothing, there are going to be some expenses because I think Mary and maybe the committee are going to say to departments, "You need to change your seal to make sure that it conforms with the town bylaw," because there's only one seal. So, there may be some expenses in any event for departments making the change over to the correct seal.
Because the reality is what we have is a confusing situation that is inconsistent with the bylaw and historically has some, some questions as well. I, I want to get back to the other point again about the removal of an Indian, because that's the first thing that sort of jumps out at you when you look at the new seal. And the recommendations, I, I was quite intrigued with the recommendations from the state commission that was established to review the state seal. And I was quite surprised that there was pretty much almost unanimity among the state commission members that an individual should be taken off the seal. I noticed that's the case in Mashpee. Mashpee, that seal changed and they took, and I noticed that on this commission, I'm looking at Brian Whedon, he is the chairman of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe Tribal Council. I see John Peters, that's a name that's very familiar, he is the state Indian Affairs Commissioner. So, I'm looking at this and clearly so, we've had Native Americans represented on this commission, so this is a fairly broadly and widely held view. Do you want to comment on that, George?
Yes, thank you. And I, I think it, it clearly says a lot that Brian Whedon, who is Wampanoag, is, you know, confirming also his feeling, as indicated here, that, that human representation is problematic because it's not inclusive and, you know, you can never get it right, I guess is, you know, the way to say it also. So, I think-
And you took that statement directly from him. So, that statement, it comes directly from the chairman of the Mashpee Tribe?
That's correct. You know, I reached out to the clerk of the commission and asked for their minutes because clearly that was going to be a key issue for us to consider and they sent me the minutes. So, and yes.
Getting to your recommendations, I, I strongly support the outreach and the education. I think this is a very interesting exercise for the town and I think it provides a wonderful opportunity to not only focus on just the town and the seal, but also the town itself and the history, historical aspects of the town that I know people have a real interest in. Because clearly there are things that are being presented tonight that, I mean, are new to a lot of people and I think it's very, very helpful. I like your recommendation about the outreach and a lot of public discussion. Maybe we should have additional, a page or something posted where we can get more comments, public comment, allow, maybe something posted on our website with your recommendations and, you know, the, the proposed flag, excuse me, the seal in the flag.
I should have mentioned that the town administrator had offered to have the new information director assist us in that, to get the word out, just as you were saying, Mr. Forrest.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful to have a very interesting public discussion because the reality, you know, when you look at the polling on this, I mean, certainly there's a majority that made its voices felt, but clearly there's, the, the minority view was somewhat substantial as well. So, I think this is generally something that does deserve a lot of public outreach and discussion and awareness. And then I think what we should do as a board, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend is that we hold off taking on any action, give the public a chance to speak and engage with the committee and its members, hear what they have to say and hopefully we can all benefit and welcome the dialogue that takes place in the community. But I too join my fellow select board members in thanking you wholeheartedly for the work that you've done and all the time and energy that you've put into this. It's clearly a significant amount of work and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
I could talk to you for a substantial amount of time about this. I mean, it's loaded with questions and issues, but I'll try to save some of that for later. In the survey, it talked, the first question said, "Should we modify the current seal to more accurately reflect the towns of Yarmouth's indigenous peoples' history?" Not just, should we change it, but should we change it to reflect, to more accurately reflect the indigenous people? And that was like pretty, almost split vote, 51 to 49. So, now we have the pine tree replacing, let's call it, for lack of a better word, the figure of a, of a Native American. And if I understand the materials correctly, the Wampanoag, is it the Wampanoag nation that attributes their creation to the root of the, the tree? Is that, is that what I heard?
Yes.
Yes.
How are people, are the people going to know that? I would never know that looking at a seal and I, and I, and I never heard that story before. So, how's that, so, but when I look at, when I look at the traditional seal, and I understand there's a teepee there instead of a wetto, that the, the headdress part of, I don't know what you would call it, but it's a little either too long or too short, I forget which, there's a few arrows missing, but yet, I know what that means. I see that, I know that's a Native American and that Native American figure to me dominates the seal, almost has a place of honor on the seal. But I look at a tree, unless you told me the background, and I'm not arguing with the artistic part of this, I'm talking about the, what's the word I want to say? The his, the history, I guess, of, of what it represents, the symbol, the history behind the symbol. I would never know that. So, I guess my question is, how does that more accurately reflect the history of indigenous people? Yes.
I think part of that speaks to the outreach. So, with the outreach and with a new bylaw and with the communication, you're going to be able to, to get that information out there. One of the things that struck me initially, George had presented us with information about Mashpee's process when they had gone through their redesign. And one of the things that struck me was that a lot of the symbols that they used to represent the Native American people in the new Mashpee redesign really were nature. It was, it was a seal, it was a tree, it was an eagle, it was the Mashpee River. So, it struck me that we had a lot of similar parallels in our seal. So, I think as part of the outreach process, we can overcome that, that hump of a lack of education on those stories.
I mean, you'd have to. I don't think you'd find a handful of people that would look at that seal and make the association with that creation story.
And, and that's fair, but to Mary's point, it took 130 years to get here and it'll take a little while to educate people and, and that's a fun part of this process, is to open people's minds and perspectives and understand that our native neighbors, you know, have a culture and, and it's, it's good to understand that and learn it.
Now, there's a little on the, on this slide, I guess that's the same one that's up there in the lower right-hand corner. It talks about Wampum and stories of shells of Native Americans in it, it says, "The Wampanoag people are descended from the roots of the white pine." Barbara Clark, Cape Cod Times. Is there some, something better than that, some definitive treatise or book that a person can read rather than, I don't even know who Barbara Clark is, I don't even know what the Cape Cod Times is much anymore, but how do we, you know, I, I would think if you're going to go through the monumental task of changing a town's seal, you got to make sure, absolutely certain that that history's correct.
Yes.
That that creation story is correct. Is there, is there some better source people can go to?
And, you know, good question.
I like newspaper snippets for definitive sources.
And it's not meant to be definitive, it's meant to, just to be descriptive. And so, this slide, which we didn't present, but is in the overall package, you, you can see Paula Peters referencing this. And I don't know if people had a chance to see this exhibit, it was really fabulous. And so, they have recreated Metacom's belt and, as indicated there, Mr. Chairman, in the middle of it is the pine tree. And it speaks to, you know, their belief that they emanate from the roots. So, it's a good point, this is not meant to be exhaustive and definitive, but we have more work to do that. Again, this was bigger picture with more work to do, but, but there it is right there.
And I, and again, to be clear, I'm not trying to discredit the story or anything like that, I just want to make, make sure it's accurate.
Yes.
That it represents that the pine tree and the story of their origins have definitively reliable sources. It's just like if, if you say, well, what did, you know, what's the story of creation in the Bible? Then you go, you, you go read Genesis, right? That would be your, that would be your source. It wouldn't be what Barbara whoever at the Cape Cod Times told you, you know? So, that, that's my point. Because you, you are making such a major change.
We are moving-
It would be shameful if you ever did a seal only to find out that information didn't match up.
We believe it does and certainly can expand upon that. And it takes the pine tree that is in the seal today and moves it, but, so we didn't add the pine tree, it was always there.
Right. But I thought there was some discussion that that really wasn't a pine tree, it was some other species of tree, is that correct?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the bylaw mentions it as a pine tree, the representation could be interpreted, I mean, is it a spruce, is it a pine? So, it's just visually, it's a question.
And the, these other questions, I just, just out of curiosity, is, I think the whole impetus of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, was the, some of the inaccuracies of the images that are on the current seal. Now, we've talked a little bit about symbolism, right? About what this pine tree symbolizes, et cetera. Who says that symbols have to be 100% historically accurate? If I, if I look at the current town seal, I think I, I know I'm looking at a Native American, okay, I'm looking at a wigwam instead of a wetto, but I'm looking at a Native American habitat, maybe a Western Indian as opposed to a Native American Indian. The headdress may be off a little bit, but I mean, where does that, where does that hard and fast rule come that a symbol has to be 100% historically accurate? That's the premise from which I think all this arises. And I'm just curious where that comes from.
Sir, can I, can I address that? I think, you know, as part of George's research, I think going to the source and Brian Whedon as the leader of the Wampanoag saying, you know, on the subcommittee that he was part of, that the design should not include human representation. I think that, that was basically our, you know, if, if the leader of the Wampanoag says this, that, that-
I get that, but I don't think that was the starting point. I remember presentations being made about, I think you're at level two, where I'm at level one, meaning that, yes, I think he weighed in eventually and you got these people that had expertise in Wampanoag culture and history and tradition, but I don't think that was the ground for impetus that drove the process of redesigning the seal. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely right. And there's a difference between historically accurate and culturally accurate. And it was the cultural representation which was the point, that, that clearly was not correct. So, the historical commission's recommendation was based on the fact that it was culturally inaccurate, not historically inaccurate.
Well, I'm going to agree with Mark that I think some significant outreach has got to be made because unless people can understand the history of, or the cultural significance, I guess, of the pine tree and the creation, the origin of, of the tribe. If that's not done, it looks to me like the Native American got demoted instead of honored. One thing I do like about our traditional seal is that the Native American figure is the dominant part of it and should be.
And, and that's a good point, Mr. Chairman, because, again, we don't know who created it, but the imagery was front and center. It wasn't in back, it wasn't, I mean, it was there. So, clearly, 130 years ago, our forebears recognized that fact. And the archaeological record here in the town indicates at Taylor Bay Farm that Native peoples were here at least 10,000 years ago, so.
Even more, even longer?
Absolutely.
Probably more like 12.
So, I think if, if you seriously consider putting this on the warrant, we have work to do. I know you have a timeline of, I think, January, when you have to make a decision on putting it on the, on the warrant. We would urge you to do that. And then we'll be taking it from there if you choose to do-
Are you aware of the, you know, like I said, some definitive publications about the stor, their creation story and how the pine tree fits into that? I'd be, I'd be very anxious to see it and read it.
Mr. Chairman, that'll be top on the list to get that kind of detail.
Okay, thank you. I, I want to, again, like my colleagues, commend you for all your hard work and appreciate you coming in here tonight. It's, these discussions are very, very interesting. I, I, again, it's, I'm interested in history and, and cultures of different people and things like that and the great things to talk about, great things to get educated about. And we appreciate all your work and appreciate your, your art work as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the time. We appreciate it.
Okay, next item, capital improvement program presentation.
Thank you, Walter.
You did a good job.
Well, they're setting up, I'm just going to run-
Yeah, we're going to take a couple of minutes, I'm going to get some water, if you're going to go to ladies room, it's going somewhere. It's interesting stuff.
It is. I think it's an opportunity to do some educating on the Wampanoag.
Hi, George.
Yeah.
All kinds of cool.
It's stunning.
Yeah.
It's, it's, well, it captures aspects of what you're trying to say.
How you doing? Good?
Thank you, Bob.
You like, we're a little behind agenda.
And actually, when you're up closer to it, it's like, see-
Well, this is what I was trying to say, like, the, the texture, like the hand gun call, I think is a part of that history. And like, we worked a lot of Mashpee town seals since they redid it, but it's all computer-generated. So, it's like, it's radiating as it looks like it's done on a computer.
Fascinating.
How does the library-
I think the channel-
Want a coffee, Chair?
Yes, I do.
You will?
Human dominated.
I wish it was really.
Human dominated.
I wish it was really.
Some people will miss.
No interjections.
I know, this is so comfy.
It's comfy, but I can't move it.
All right, wait a minute, is this the? Is he driving, is he driving, or are you driving?
I got one over here. What am I using?
Is that just a pointer? Is that a laser pointer? No. Oops, where's my?
Yeah, I don't know what that's for.
I'm just reading everybody's name down, so I don't just have to see every.
I did that too.
Oh, I hate that. That happened to me before. It's like, yeah, and, you know, you tell them it's an emergency.
So they were at the school and.
Well, you have to go, tell them, I gotta go on TV, fellas.
I know, what, so, you know. So I thought to myself, geez, I really should put that kind of case.
You know what, you're really lucky, that's like, excellent. Just opportunity that's out there.
Yeah.
You all set for Christmas?
Almost, getting, getting close. I did get my, my big gift for, like, my wife and the family. Jessica was dying to go see.
Oh, really?
I'll share it soon.
Yeah.
All right, if you can think of anybody else who might have run above both.
Yeah.
You know, last night.
Yep, I tested it.
That's good.
It's good.
More about trying to help them on the same.
That's great.
I can't wait.
I have to go up to Marblehead.
Is it his wedding?
No, stay out of it.
They pull you in at 10:00.
Brother is doing it this year.
How you feeling, by the way, George?
Oh, my back's still there. Now, it was getting better, so I canceled my appointment. And now all of a sudden, it twists back again.
What did you have, like, a chiro appointment?
Yeah, I did.
Where you going to?
I'm going to go to Bass River Therapeutic.
What's that guy's name, Rita?
Re- Rita.
I heard her, I heard amazing stories about that guy. From a nurse. Yeah, there's a guy in the gym. He's looking at it, all of a sudden, he couldn't. Like, one of his arms.
Yeah.
Take a long story short, he started treating again.
I don't know.
I guess several weeks he's back, you know?
Oh. It was two weeks yesterday that I did it.
That's still not that long.
No, but, you know, I think it's getting better on its own, I don't think.
Yeah, time's a big factor, there's no question.
And I get the school vacation week coming up now, too. So I can kind of rest it a little bit more.
You might want to see him, though, to get going, you know?
Yeah.
Ginger Baker.
This guy swears by him. And I remember how bad off he was and how well he's doing now. Okay, Mark's back. Good evening, ladies.
Hello.
Gentlemen.
You ready for us to begin?
Well, set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the capital budget committee is here before you again. And I would like to start by introducing our committee. I'm Judy Connors Tarver, I've been chairing. And Sandy Fife, who is officially the vice chair, is really my co-chair because of all that she brings. Our representative from the finance committee is George Perkins, who is not with us tonight. Our planning committee representative is Ken Smith. And our at-large members are, where are we? Andrew Lear and Lindsay Pietro. And we have one opening, so I'd like to make an appeal to the public. This is a great way to understand how your government is working and just fill out an interest form and a talent bank form. And we'd be happy to talk with you about participating in the capital budget committee.
Okay, good.
All right.
Hopefully, there's somebody out there that's listening to you.
Okay, so we're going to move into the purpose of our presentation. And this is the official handoff of our document. We handed it off to the finance committee last week. And then we are handing it off to you. This is just the initial document to facilitate the budget and capital discussions. We will then return to our process in January to finalize the plan after the warrant is developed. And we have the input from the dentist voting particularly for the school issues. And we're providing an overview of the document and discussion of our initial recommendations. So who we are. The capital budget committee is charged with reviewing all the requests for capital items and making recommendations to the finance committee, the board of selectmen, and then ultimately to town meeting. A capital item is an item that typically has a minimum value of $10,000 or a useful life of at least five years. Examples of capital items are buildings, vehicles, computer equipment, roadway, sidewalk, waterway, construction costs. Just as a little side note on that number, we've recently come to realize that our number of $10,000 might be a little on the low side now because it's been in place for a while. So that's just a little side note. So our recommendations to you, as you saw in your packet, take the form of a five-year capital improvement plan and then a 10-year facility plan. And those should be serving as the town's overarching planning documents. Each year, these items are budgeted for and then are presented to town meeting as the capital budget. The capital budget is separate from the town's operating budget, which would include funds for recurring expenses like salaries, employee bennies, and office expenses. So things that keep the town moving are not capital expenses. We're in the second year of a cloud-based system for entry and rating and management of our projects. The first year, we worked with Bill. He inherited the previous system. And it didn't take him long to address that, introduce a new software for us to use. The departments will take that software, they enter their information, their supporting documents are linked to their projects, and everything is accessible to us. So we can go in and see a project for replacing a truck. And then the supporting documents, we just click on them and we can see a bid, we can see pictures of the rust, a report from the mechanic, whatever supporting documentation they provide. So that information goes before the town administrator, and those are reviewed. And then those projects are forwarded to us via the portal. So if Bob is not approving them, we're not seeing them. We see, we see what he's given, the go-ahead. That's also a change from the past. The system facilitates a more rapid movement of that CIP process, which means that, I'm going to say, special town meeting articles are entered as they're moving toward the town meeting date. So we're kind of gearing up in the fall as those special town meeting projects are being prepared to be presented. And so we're working in two ballparks at once. We're working on the budget that will be prepared for spring town meeting, for annual town meeting, and we're doing those catch-up projects for the special town meeting in the fall. What's nice, though, is that we can now track everything that's submitted because the system will hold the projects even if they were bypassed by prior capital plans. So if something's in there, we've rated it, and maybe for some reason it just didn't get funded, it's still in the system and we can go back and look at it. The departments can retrieve it, resubmit it. This is a, a schedule. I'm not going to ask you to read the schedule, but please look at the color bands. Every participant in this process has a color. So Bob's green, we're the blue, FinCom is the red. And you can see that there, there are sort of chunks of time that people or committees are working and are more active. So we're coming to the end of our active period here where you see all the col-, the different color bands coming together. So we've handed off to FinCom, we're coming to you. And then FinCom really dives in. And then we come in way back there again in February, and that's when our hearing is. So what this demonstrates is that it's kind of a step-by-step-by-step process, and there isn't a lot of interaction along the way. And that will come up as an issue for improvement as we're looking at this. So rather than us doing all this work in isolation without knowing what the budget is, there might be a little more back and forth, that we would, it would be a more organic process that way. So when projects are submitted to us, we rate them. And we can access what the departments entered and what was forwarded by the town administrator. We see the approval. And then we provide ratings, which I'll discuss in a little more detail in a minute. And then we can comment on them, too, which really facilitates our communication with each other because often we're doing this at home, you know, Sunday afternoon. And then I can go in and see, oh, that's what Lindsay thought about that. Maybe I should reconsider what that meant. And, or just to document some conversation that we may have had in a meeting. We continue to use our liaison's approach. We've been doing that for a number of years now. So we appoint a committee member or two to meet with members of the departments. And we go out, we talk about their key ideas, we look at the projects, we might see the vehicles. But we also give them ideas for improving their presentation. So we might talk to them about disposal plans, you know, so what are you going to do with this vehicle, this generator, whatever it is you're replacing? So that when they come to meet with the entire CBC, they're a little more prepared. The CBC then has them come in and appear. They reviewed their special town meeting items and then their annual town meeting items. And that took like five meetings to get everybody processed through. And those were extremely helpful in conjunction with the liaison approach because we had somebody in our committee who could give a little more background or maybe prompt the department to fill in a little more detail in a certain way. Then we moved on to rating. So we have two scores, significance and then readiness because we want to look at projects in a holistic way. But more to the point, those two areas are weighted. So the significance is weighted at 70% and the readiness at 30%. And there are specific criteria for each of those. So we rate one, two, three, four, and a half. And so the four things that we'll look quickly at, essential, desirable, acceptable, and deferable have very clear descriptors, which we'll see in a second. So for example, an essential project would remedy a dangerous situation, is critically needed, we possibly would lose funding if we didn't get moving on it, or is mandated by the state or federal government. A desirable project is none of those, however. It would benefit the community, there's a validity of timing in what they're presenting, it's mandated within five years. And maybe there are other limited sources of funding available if we move on that now. A two is acceptable, is none of the above, is adequately planned, but it could be postponed if budget cuts are necessary. And deferable is none of the above, it's not ready, there's no mandate, it won't pose a threat to health and safety if deferred. Now remember that those four areas are applied both to readiness and necessity. Sorry, I'm missing the actual term.
Significance.
Significance, thank you, okay. So here we get into our spreadsheets. This is a data review by the funding sources, so this isn't by project. And first column is 2024, where we are right now. And 2025, the second column, is what we're working on. The funding sources are populated out through five years. And you'll see that these are fairly well-populated. The top, hmm, one, two, five items, bonding issues, you'll see are moved out, they start in 2026. And that's good planning for those debts that will be incurred for upcoming projects. We have a small item there for capital stabilization. And then you can see, just in general, how things are populated out. Let's, let's take a look, for example, move down to school stabilization. We don't have much data there. That would be a place where we might need some data. Golf Enterprise, jumping up to the middle. We have our current year's entry, we have the proposed year's entry, and then that's a little bit light there. These are things that through our system, we know, aren't entered yet. But we're seeing much more forward-looking by using this because it's very, very public and the departments know that we're all looking at these. The next slide will show the next five years. So you see that the first column is 2030. Again, the bond issues at the top are very well-populated with known information. And it's getting a little lighter here. This is some, a goal that we have, to work on this facility plan for the 10 years out so that this kind of approach will be better understood. Bill has been working with us and with the departments to look at how the debt is recorded in these plans and how that becomes a meaningful number in decision-making. So here we go with, speaking of debt, the funding with debt. So this was an attempt to look at the debt for these larger projects we have. And you see a little peak there, 2029, and this represents wastewater, I believe? Wastewater?
Phase two kicks in, right?
Okay, that's when the phase two of the wastewater kicks in. So there's a little jump there. But by looking at the debt and the funding, it can level that out for planning, for budgeting, for setting tax rates, for all of our decision-making. If we, this, this shows, this is a different look at the funding sources, again, for 10 years. And if you look at those big chunks of the pie, in the yellow, Water Enterprise, Raisin. Raise and appropriate is a big one over on the right, the blue, the bond for wastewater finance, which everyone has worked so hard on. You'll see a big chunk at the bottom there, free cash, too. And we've been using our free cash to run our town for a while now. On the slim sides, we have small amount of, well, the state grant money is 5.29. And the federal grant is quite miniscule, it's zero down at the bottom. It's just kind of a label. Dennis funding is also small because it's a small part of our overall. It's really just that small part of the school. CPC funding, .28. So you can see how they fall over 10 years. These are lump sum recommendations for our current year. 2024 is where we are now. But that was just the Fall Town Meeting items. So those are the things we saw at Fall Town Meeting and moved on. And then moving to the second column, Annual Town Meeting, these are the funding that we're working with. Free cash, you can see, is a large number this year. And debt exclusion borrowing, a large number. Raise and appropriate and Septage Enterprise, big numbers. We're going back to the top again. CEDC funds is a smaller number. So these are totaled across because those are all the numbers that we've been working with this year. But they really are two different fiscal years. I know you're familiar with that idea. One thing I do want to point out is the recycling fund total, which is pretty small, it's 15,000. And over four or five years, that number has been declining because we're not getting a revenue stream from our recycling. So that was a good revenue stream to support the needs in that department. And it's dwindling. And, you know, things that we used to be able to sell and create revenue from, we're now paying to have hauled away. So it's a big change. And that fund will probably not be very healthy. So moving forward, our observations are that we probably should consider some charter updates because right now, we're working under those charter deadlines, as everyone is. So we had to meet our December 1 deadline to get our information to FinCom. But then that's done, and then we kind of go away, and then they take it over. So it's a sequence rather than a collaboration. Although I do have to say, we've been collaborating a little more often with FinCom this year. But it makes it a little bit difficult to discuss long-range planning when you're focusing on, we're focusing on reviewing the projects, then we're focusing on getting those ready for the warrant, and we hand it off, and that's the next thing. The next issue is one that is a very real issue. And after COVID, it didn't go away. And that's supply chain issues. And what we're seeing, departments come in and they've done their homework and they've recommended a need, and they get a bid. Maybe they've worked on it over the summer and got a bid dated August or September. And then we go through our process. It doesn't get voted on until Annual Town Meeting. And then they could move on that. But now they're working with a bid, and we saw it over and over and over again. This bid is good for 30 days. And that's because the costs are rising, especially with vehicles. The dealers are not willing to hold a bid, they're not willing to hold a price. Construction is the same way. So that was a recurring issue. We saw it all over the place. And the other one that we talk a lot about, and we've been talking about for a couple of years, is free cash. And we're feeling that this should not be used for projects that are repeated annually, that that's operating budget. And a possible suggestion is the use of free cash and any given year should have a cap by percentage, how much of that could be used. Further free cash should be, where possible, set aside for projects in the out-years. We've also discussed the whole idea of funding some stabilization money through free cash. It got a little unsettling, maybe, to see lease things, leased vehicles usually, and those agreements out two or three or five years. And the funding source labeled as free cash. And we don't know what free cash will be in three to five years. So rolling stock has been a live issue in town for quite a few years. And we've had projects in the past to look at our fleet and what the condition of our fleet is, how much fuel we've been using, and so on. And we really do need to develop a plan across all departments with a uniform investment and set aside funds as possible and how we can apply those funds. We also need to create some standard vehicle types and purchase across departments. So our departments may come and want a pickup truck, and they go to the state bid list and they'll pick one out. And another department needs a very similar vehicle or similar uses to be done by that vehicle, and they'll pick a different one off the state bid list and maybe get a bid from a different dealer. And so these things would, if they were centralized, might be much more efficient and be more efficient for our mechanics to do routine maintenance and just kind of reeling the process to make it easier, too, on the staff so they're not always starting from square one. For facilities, we want to create a capital maintenance plan across all the municipal buildings that would bring the facilities up to the necessary standards and prioritize that plan to improve the buildings based on need and avoiding the requirements for emergency work. It's been that departments will come to us with building needs. So the senior center might come and say, we have this building issue. The police department comes and they have a building issue. But by having that, again, centralized, do a real assessment of what our needs are across town, would make that much easier and efficient. There's also kind of benefits to be able to say to a contractor, we need two roofs done instead of, we need this roof done here, and then, oh yeah, next year, maybe, we need another roof. But we can kind of bring those together in an economy of scale. Alternate funding has been increasing over the last couple of years. So we want to look at a schedule for alternate funding for CIP projects over multiple years and a plan to seek that funding and sequencing the internal funding processes with the CIP to facilitate that coordination. So again, people are finding new pots of money, and that really needs to be recognized and commended. But again, centralizing that and looking at more alternate sources of funding will support us. So our next steps now, this year, are to review these numbers with administration and the departments for confirmation because, as I said, these are kind of live numbers and they're still variable. Then we'll transmit those outcomes. We'll provide spreadsheets to FinCom and to you folks on the Select Board for coordination with the budget process and post the numbers in our narrative online. We are able to track this progress as an ongoing process. And any changes that come with the warrant process and then whatever happens from Dennis decisions and then inform the departments to keep their CIP submittals updated. So what's happened before sometimes has been, we submit this to you and it goes to administration, and then there are some changes made, maybe. And then it comes back to us and we may have like a different document that then we're trying to justify with what our decision-making and our voting and our plans were, but had to do with the input. That goes back to the earlier comments about meshing the system a little bit better. So this is the thank you time. And we depend on cooperation from all the departments across the town. We meet with lots of staff people. They're generous with their time and information. They fill in gaps and they answer our questions. And we need to thank them for everything that they do to help give us the information we need to make our job proceed. Specifically for our committee, we have Bill Scott, who has been shepherding us through this software change and listening to our complaints about it and getting those items fixed and tweaked so that we're all working a little more smoothly together. And I need to thank also Marielle Florio and PM Barnes in the Administrative Office, who are always responsive and helpful to us with all of our quirky little detail questions. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you.
That's helped us.
Anybody have any questions or comments, Mark?
Thank you. No, just to thank the committee, Judy and Sandy and the rest of the gang for your work. This is not an easy job. And you know, the reality is that every time we sit down with you, it's getting better and better.
Yes.
I mean, that's just it. It's remarkable. And obviously, having Bill Scott helping adds a lot to this whole process. So I know Bill is very humble, rarely takes a bow, but we have to give him a big shout-out here because he's a huge help in all of this. And thank you, Bill, for all of your support for this committee. It's evident, it shows, and it's very much appreciated.
I'm blushing, but you can't see it through the beard.
Yeah. Yeah, you can always see evidence of his work.
He leaves his tracks, right?
Yeah. Well, first of all, he's a guru on PowerPoints. And then when you see a rating significance like essential, desirable, acceptable, deferable, where does that come from, right? But from Bill. No, this is great. This is terrific, very readable, very easy to understand. And you know, what's nice is it's tying in together with the improvements in our financial management here in town, where we actually have resources to make available for important capital projects. So you know, after so many years of studying capital improvements that are needed and not really having much in terms of resources to apply to it, this is a very nice spot to be in. I always try to caution myself that, you know, as a Select Board member, you know, we're in a moment, but don't count on it lasting, you know, that long. You know, Yarmouth has always been challenged in terms of managing its finances just because of some structural things. And at some point, they're going to continue to play. And, but having the discipline of this approach and having this kind of system in place is enormously beneficial. So thanks to everyone for all of your hard work in putting this all together. So you've done your job, you have passed the baton on to the rest of us. And now our job is to dig into it with the rest of the team to go over this stuff. So I'm sure we'll be seeing more of you in the weeks and months to come. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Marcus?
Only to say thank you very much. There's a lot of hard work that's in here and a lot of dedication. And I greatly appreciate all that every one of you have done. And also, Bill, thank you so much. Yes, we can see, we can see your handwriting all over this. But I think for everyone involved, it's becoming much simpler now for us to be able to sit down and differentiate. And you've now given us our homework to take a look at, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, but I do concur with my two colleagues. And I want to thank you for all your hard work. And as Mark said, I think that the product gets better and better. And I'm sure that Bill's a great resource as well. And I want to publicly thank him also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if it's possible, before we let these folks go, I just wanted to add a couple of key points because this capital improvement program has been a central focus of some of the things that we've been trying to achieve to improve our overall finances. And I really need to take my hat off to the committee. They've done such a tremendous job in all of our town departments. And Bill's work has just been absolutely impeccable on this project. And the things that I just wanted to point out for board members that I'm extremely hopeful will be a tremendous help to you that's different than the capital improvement program we looked at, say, three years ago, is first and foremost, on the revenue piece, that the funding sources are laid out in a much more comprehensive fashion. Now, you know, granted, we're still tightening up in that year, five to 10. It's difficult on some of the funding to get exact amounts. But we used to have giant projects with no funding plan really associated with them, all the way up until it would get to be a recommendation. And a lot of what people were doing is that, you know, there's a lot of thought went into year one, but after year one, forget it. And I think that the work they've done in honing down on the comprehensive analysis of the revenues that are here to support those capital projects, where are they coming from, what are the pots? And you see them all laid out. That's a huge improvement. The other improvement that really is striking, the analysis on the projects, the project definition, the project justification. We didn't go over them, but when you go online to look at this capital improvement program, every single project has a detailed project information sheet. It contains pictures of the project, an analysis of the cost, the justification, where the money's coming from. For every one of these projects, the information sheets themselves, it's like almost like an inch-tall packet. And every single one of those projects is gone through in detail by these folks. And they're really much more demanding on the departments. You can't get away with some half-baked submission these days. It just doesn't happen. What that has done is it's made the value, right, of this document as a financial planning tool extremely more valuable. It ties directly in. And these free cash things, yes, we've been using more free cash because for the first time, we've had some. We're still trying to keep it down. You know, it's 10% of the CIP. And, you know, we're hopefully going to be leveraging other resources. But having that more accurate representation of the town's needs and the plans, what we're going to do, where the money's going to come from. I hope that as policymakers, you find to be of a value that, I mean, these were my dreams coming in, the things that we needed to get, right, out of this capital improvement program that needed to go to the next level. And I'm really happy to see that they've done. And what that does for us, if you saw the list, now we can sort of focus on some critical policy issues moving forward, not just what do we do? How do we tighten up this? How do we get the vehicles in it? And, you know, and so every year, we can incrementally tighten this. But it really is a strong package. And I'll tell you what, out of all the ones I've seen in other towns, I think Yarmouth is really doing great. And having a strong committee, having a strong resources, is Bill going out to departments, asking for what we need, and then getting it back. I just wanted to say a couple of words because I'm very proud of their effort, and it's just good to be a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you very much. And Merry Christmas, everyone.
Same to you.
Happy holidays.
Okay, we got CEDC Special Event Funding Recommendations for calendar year 2024.
Yeah, call it the, that last one on the line that's a PDF, are some slides for CEDC. And they can move us along.
How you doing? How are you?
Good.
Good.
Much better than last week.
It's all a process, right?
Right.
Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Sorry about that. I didn't know where you were supposed to be here, but...
No, that's okay. That's a good place.
Yeah.
So, why don't you gentlemen introduce yourselves, and then you can go through the recommendations for us.
Sure.
Steve O'Neill, Chairman of the CEDC.
I'm Joseph Manning. I'm a member of the committee.
Joe Gibbs, a member of the committee also.
And our staff is Karen Green, done a fantastic job for us. I don't know if we want to start first with what we talked about last week with the St. Patrick's Day Committee, or do you want to handle that separately?
If you want to, that's fine. We have in our packet a memo that you wrote on December 15th, so you can start there.
So, we decided, after we spoke with the town administrator, and we met last week, we decided to fund the St. Patrick's Day Committee for $40,000 for next fiscal year. You have any questions on that?
I think if I understand, those are from last year's funds, right? That were kind of unused funds, is that correct?
That is correct, and a lot of this occurred, the vote at their previous meeting, when I met with the committee after, you know, we received an email earlier from the parade committee indicating that they may not be able to operate a parade in Yarmouth in the current year. So, it was a lot of uncertainty, and I, you know, after discussing it, you know, briefly with some of the members of the Board of Selectmen, I took it upon myself to contact the parade folks and, you know, indicate to them that, you know, the town of Yarmouth still desired to have the St. Patrick's Day Parade. What would it take? And, you know, I learned of potential efforts to, you know, move this to neighboring committees and things, and so what we talked about with them, under what circumstances could we have that parade not only stay for this year in Yarmouth, but also in subsequent years? And the basic agreement that we received from the parade committee is that if we would agree to continue funding at, you know, roughly the same rates that we have been in the past, that they would commit to a three-year program, having it this year and three additional years, and then to see if the, you know, configuration of the committee as it is today will continue past that period, or do we need to make sure that we strengthen it? And I think that gives us enough time to strengthen it. And I had shared that in meeting with the committee, and by using some leftover funds from the previous year, they've been able to fund the parade, I think, at a good level for this fiscal year. But one of the concepts that we discussed was that the CEDC really had a huge role in incubating this parade, growing it to where it is now. And at this time, what we'd like to do is spin it off from being just solely an event under the CEDC and potentially setting up a special event budget under the control of the selectmen, so that we can spin off an event like this, keep it kind of a standalone, and allow the CEDC in future years. I think they've indicated that they'd like to explore some other new events that they can try to promote and incubate that may one day grow to be premier events in Yarmouth, like the parade is now, that folks all over, you know, the Cape and beyond come down here to see, and they enjoy it. So, what we seek to do is to try to get that like amount of funding in a separate account for next year, maybe transferring funds at town meetings, see if we can fit that into the budget, and move it along like that. And I think it's a good way to make sure, we've talked to the parade organizers, and even at this late date, they feel that they're in good shape to operate a very high-quality parade this coming April, and also, you know, they've committed to staying in Yarmouth and doing it beyond then.
Mark, anything?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think it's, I think it probably makes sense for us to dispense with this particular topic before we go through the other ones. I have to admit, I'm a bit disappointed in how this has all played out. We had the, we asked the committee, the parade committee, to come before our board in May, and we thanked them for all of their hard work. We thanked them for what was under the, probably some of the more difficult weather conditions, putting together an outstanding parade that drew a ton of people to the town of Yarmouth for an extended period of time. And in addition to thanking them and congratulating them, we also asked them for some ideas on how to improve things, because this is an event that we want to continue in Yarmouth. You know, if I ran the Chamber of Commerce in Hyannis or in another community, I'd be trying to lure the parade to my community. So, one of the things they asked us to do was to, they needed more money, and they gave us a rough idea of what that was, and they told us that they would like to get some indication of support in August, or by August. So, here we are. It's December going into January, and we're just dealing with this now. This was supposed to have been dealt with in August, but here we are now, and if people are worried why there's a potential loss of the parade, I can perfectly understand it, because if I came before this board in May and laid out a series of recommendations, and now I'm waiting and waiting and getting no response, I can certainly understand why they might be looking to go some other place. So, we need to make every effort to sustain this parade. It's a wonderful event. It brings Yarmouth together. It brings thousands and thousands of residents, and I think as a board, we made it abundantly clear what we wanted, what our priority was, what we wanted to see happen, and it hasn't. And so, I'm very disappointed in the committee. This has not proceeded at all the way we had wanted it to. So now, there are four or five months where they haven't really been able to market or do much of anything. I think $40,000 is a minimum. I would recommend, as a board, that we would take $50,000 from that account and make it available to this, and that's the motion that I'm going to make to this board. I also watched your meeting, and I watched the way you treated our town administrator. Now, he goes to those meetings representing us. He's doing the work for our board, and my hope is that in future meetings, you treat him with full respect, because that's not what I saw at your meeting. And I honestly think you owe him an apology for the way in which he was treated. I have a great deal of respect for the work, but maybe that was a bad day, but we've got to get this right. I agree with the recommendations of the town administrator, that we need to have an allocation of funds in a separate bucket for the huge events that require more details. I would like to see us work with town staff to bring back the Seaside Festival. They've run into the same problem. If there are two events that bring Yarmouth community together, it's the Seaside Festival and the St. Patty's Day Parade, and I think we've made it very clear that the St. Patty's Day Parade is a priority for us. I think I have no objection to making it abundantly clear that we should be doing everything that we can with respect to the Seaside Festival Parade, just to see the number of local folks, as well as visitors, coming up for both of those events. So, those are my comments, and when it's appropriate, I'd be happy to make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman, and a motion on this particular item. And like I said, I would support not $40,000, but $50,000 for the parade.
Mr. Chairman, I support and agree with everything that Selectman Forrest has said today. I, too, am very disappointed. I mean, not only are the Seaside Festival and the St. Patty's Day great events for town, but let's keep in mind, they're not in that key time of between July and Labor Day. This is like on a rainy March. This is in, no, in the end of the fall. This is the times when we really desperately need to start getting some more interest in coming to Yarmouth, bringing the community together. And I also feel that we should be looking at an additional $10,000 going to them. I also agree that I think in the case of both the St. Patty's Day Parade and the Seaside Festival, we should look at those as being specific items directly to the Board of Selectmen for us to determine on an annual basis what they should get. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, I would like to walk out of this meeting tonight with some kind of understanding and resolution. I think that's always where our town administrator has been coming from with respect to the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I know these people personally, and I've talked to them, and I don't think they were posturing when they said they could move it to Bonstable. I think they were at that point, and the town administrator and I had many conversations about that. It was really difficult to engage the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, because they were unhappy people, and for some of the reasons Mark pointed out about, when they had to hear what their expectations were, and what commitment they felt we made to them, and how they didn't feel these commitments were being honored. At the same time, you guys do important work, and I want to acknowledge that, and I want to thank you for the work that you do for the town. But there's times that committees have to understand that selectmen are the executive branch of the government, and they want to see certain things happen. They want to see certain projects get priority, et cetera, and sometimes committees feel they're losing their grasp, or they're losing their importance, or they're losing their significance, and that's really not the way it is at all. You may disagree with this, and it's fine if you do, but I think the St. Patrick's Day Parade is a signature event for the town of Yarmouth. I think it brings a lot of people here. I think it's great for the businesses at a time when businesses aren't doing very well in the doldrums of the late winter. I think it's good for the community, for community morale. So, having said all of that, and mindful of what Mark and Dorcas want to see as a number, and I would be in concurrence with that, I want to give you guys, we're not here to beat up on you, or any, I want to give you an opportunity, if you wish, you're not required to, but if you wish to respond or clarify something, we're here to listen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not here to get any argumentative mode. I think we've all reached a conclusion that was brought forth to us last week. Bless you. I will say a couple of things.
Sure.
I think there was some miscommunication that happened in August, back then, to the town administrator, and we never heard exactly what you guys were looking for in terms of dollars. That's one. Second of all, we received applications based upon an RFP that was sent out from the town to all applicants and others that were desirous of submitting an application to us for funding, and reviewed all those. We asked all applicants to come in and speak with us, to offer their input, so we could hear firsthand, because we do have new members on our committee, what their application was all about, what their desire was to do, and how it was differentiated from other applicants in the past. Most all, everyone of the applicants came in and responded to the first meeting that we had. We had questions based upon that first meeting that we asked to be submitted for a second follow-up. Everyone followed through with those second follow-ups, except for one, and that was the parade committee. The day of the second meeting, which they were invited to, that one, and as well as the previous one, which they didn't show, they didn't show up the second one either. We received an email saying that they wouldn't be in attendance at that meeting. Now, if we're going to be talking about fairness and being committed to exemplary projects in this town, I think we all have to recognize that the projects that we are funding and recommended funding for are equally as important to that event. Furthermore, there are events or activities or projects that are at least two days, if not more, in some instances, the whole calendar year that we recommend funding for, not just one day. Finally, we try to look at applicants that don't look at the CEDC, the tourism funds, as the only available dollars for an event, that they actually go out and do some activity on their, by themselves, to augment the funding that we bring in or that we allocate out. And again, I apologize, it's not our committee. I may have misspoke earlier that we make recommendations. We don't actually make the awards. We understand that quite well. It's been pointed out to us on a number of occasions that we are making a recommendation to this full board, but, you know, respect is a two-way street. All the applicants that we recommended for funding gave us some attention, except for one, and that spoke for itself. And I think the fact that, you know, we had to come to this point speaks of that whole process. So, I'm just one member of the group. There's other members here this evening, they might want to say a few words, but that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? Anybody else in the committee?
I don't have anything to add necessarily about what Steve just described. I think he laid it out pretty well. I think there's probably more to the story on both sides. I don't disagree that the St. Patrick's Day Parade is an event that's important to this community, and it was something that our committee was looking for a way to continue to support. But the only thing I would have to add is that I don't disagree that at last week's meeting, a level of frustration was expressed that didn't necessarily come out at the appropriate time or to the appropriate people, and I'm happy to acknowledge that and take responsibility for that, and apologize to the town administrator on my behalf, and I can assure you that it won't happen again.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? All set? Okay. So, can we move past this and now the next?
Can we take a...
Steve, to your next...
Make a motion.
We have a, I'd like to make a motion on this.
You're not going to wait till we do all the things? You want to do it now?
I think we should get this out of the way now.
Then go for it.
Right, so...
Do you want to make the motion?
Chairman, yeah, I'd like to move that as a board, we support the... And I'm going to look to the town administrator for the appropriate way to word this, so that it's accurate, but this is from, this would be $50,000, and help me, Bob, in terms of the designation of the fund. This would be Tourism Promotion Funds, Leftover.
Unallocated.
Unallocated. That's the word.
$50,000 in unallocated funds in the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund.
As stated, I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to fund the St. Patrick's Day Parade to the extent of $50,000 out of undesignated.
Unallocated.
Unallocated, I'm sorry. I said undesigned, unallocated CEDC funds. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we have a second on that?
We do.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, that passes unanimously, three to zero, two members absent.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just so the committee knows, the Board of Selectmen know, that $40,000 income from us was recommended by your administrator. that $40,000 didn't come from us, it was recommended by your administrator.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand.
We understand, and just for clarification, so you don't walk out of here totally confused, when we were dealing with the Parade Committee earlier, when I was dealing with them, when Bob was dealing with them, the number that was being discussed was 50,000. I don't remember any number lower than that. In fact, I think we were telling them 50, at least 50, maybe 60, I think was what we were talking. But I know 40 wasn't mentioned ever. I know that there was nothing less than 50 mentioned. Now, again, I don't know how that number got reduced, but certainly Selectmen Forrest picked up on that, so.
It is what it is. One sec. Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so the next batch is really the applicants that I spoke about a few moments ago. It's all in the package, but I'll go over it very quickly. We had, I believe, nine applicants, $247,000 in requests. We only had $140,000 to divvy out. We met on a couple of occasions to go through those applications and decide on how we were going to meet that $140,000 item, line item. So what we decided on was on page two of the package that you have before you, the list of projects that we came to agreement on. You'll see on the left-hand side is the applicant, the event dates that they have, you see that the request that they came in with, their total budget, and then the award is on the far right column. So we have the Seaside Festival in there for $22,000, Taylor Bray Farm for $5,000, Codstock, which is a new event, something the committee members, especially the new committee members, were very high on, that they'd like to see happen at Smugglers Beach, notwithstanding the fact that there's many questions that have to be answered by the various departments in the town, police, fire, the town administrator, et cetera. Pirate Festival for $30,000, the YD Red Sox for $6,500, Garden Club $6,500, Cultural Center for $20,000, Thatcher Hall for musical events for $10,000, so a total of $140,000. I will say each one of these items took a haircut from us, except for the Codstock event. The event organizers are young, very aggressive, very assertive. They want to really see this thing take off. This would be a new event, a music event, as well as a vendor event down at Smugglers Beach. But some of the items that they need to address have to be dealt with before this event would be taking place sometime in October. I think it's a good, we think, not just I, we think it's a good blend of community development and economic development projects for the town. I think we've done a great job as far as fulfilling the requirements of the legislation that allows for the expenditure of these funds, and we look forward to a very successful event of activities and events next fiscal year.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a very excellent set of recommendations. They've obviously gone through a great deal of scrutiny, and I fully support them. I don't have any questions, other than on the Codstock event, whether or not the organizers have had any history in organizing events like this.
Yeah, they do. They have, they do run a beer garden up in Hyannis. They've done, through that, some events there. They also bring on some staff as far as food, service, activity, and beer and wine, those type of things. So yes, they do.
So this is an event that we expect will draw several thousand people?
Yes, and because of that, as you can imagine, there's public safety issues, there's transportation issues, there's all kinds of things that need to be looked at. And again, the notion that we left them with was we were very supportive of your event, but for needing to address these issues before the event is held.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we have to do, Mr. Chairman, is with all of these, particularly the special events, is be very mindful that, you know, some kind of, you know, as the town administrator has recommended and spoke to tonight, some added allocation of funds to help support details, because these are mass events, we want people to be safe. You know, we can't forget that we're in a different time now, and with large numbers of people in gatherings, you know, we often find ourselves in a situation where we really have to be mindful of the extra security costs and police costs and so forth. I think, as we all know, the town of Yarmouth Police Department takes these responsibilities incredibly seriously, and I know sometimes they get to be pricey. I think it's good to be doing stuff like this that attract a large number of people, but I do think there is some value in having an extra bucket of funds, as the administrator has recommended, and to help defray and augment some of the cost here. And obviously, if Codfest is successful, as we all hope it will be, then, you know, who knows how many more people we'll get? You know, what's important is to make sure that these events are successful, you know, and they get off the ground. But I do think, just looking at these requests that are coming in, that it only speaks to the need to really move forward on that other companion piece that we need to really work on and support and get before town meetings. So I fully support this. I think this is great work, and I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Dorcas.
I thank your work. Thank you very much for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Let's just say that the other item is behind us now. I appreciate the words that you said here, and I appreciate the work that you do. It is critical, and I fully support your recommendations on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I share Mark's comments with details. They're real budget drivers on these special events. I know that it was a big-ticket item for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and if I'm not mistaken, I think that's why Seaside cut out their parade. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but they, that event's been going on under the leadership of Jan Butler since 1978.
Forty, this will be the 4050 year coming up.
Yeah. And, you know, I remember, it wasn't that long ago, because I was on the board when they actually had, still had, the fall parade, but they got too expensive with the details, and they had to cut some things out and made more sense to do that than to cut out stuff on the actual grounds. So Mark's point's well taken.
If I can just add to that, Mr. Chairman, I think one of the things that we should try to telegraph is that we have every intention as a board to pursue some kind of special event fund to augment and provide support for the necessary additional security, so that it would be helpful to send a message to the Seaside Festival early that we'd like to see them bring back the parade, put that in their proposal, because it, again, one of the great things about the work of the committee and what this fund can do is not just do economic development, but the community aspect of economic development. There's nothing better, you know, at our May meeting, when we met with the St. Patty's Day folks, we were all commending that the weather was awful, but the—
They were packed.
The crowds were huge, and people were smiling. I've never seen people smile and enjoy themselves on such a miserable day as they did that day. And the fact of the matter is, is that all of the restaurants and all the places that I went to that weekend all talked about how busy it was and how much activity there was. And I know that kind of activity happens, you know, at the Seaside Festival. I remember my kids, they were in the D Y Band, the marching band, and the parade has a role of bringing more Yarmouth folks out. And as you know, that, you know, sometimes in the past, we've had other town departments on display. It gives, if we could do that again, it gives people an opportunity to reconnect with some of the town departments that work and serve the people of Yarmouth. That is, it was sort of building as more and more of a community event somehow when the parade was connected to it. So it would be nice for us to work together to figure out a way to do that. And again, I think there are just a couple of signature events every year that we just need to, you know, work together on to make sure that somehow we can get them in over the finish line. Some groups, if they get, if they know that we're committed to them long-term, they may actually be in a better position to actually do the kind of fundraising that we'd like to see some of them do. So, I mean, we can have those discussions with those groups, you know, about those topics, but I'm very comfortable as a board member making commitments to some of these events, but also looking at ways in which we can work collaboratively in terms of raising additional funds to support that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could—
Sure.
—to Mr. Forrest, I couldn't agree, we couldn't agree with you more. The applicants that required some type of public safety support echoed those same scenarios. They could do more, but for the need to budget for some type of public safety aspect of their activity. So whatever we can do to move to a place where we don't necessarily have to put that component into the tourism funds would be a fantastic start. I think it'd go a long way—
I think tonight's meeting, if there's an outcome from tonight's meeting, is that there's, I think, a consensus between our board and yours that we need to create, follow-up on the recommendations of the administrator, and create a special fund to augment those dollars, that we shouldn't be looking to the Tourism Promotion Fund to carry the entire burden of that. It would be great to have the Tourism, you know, Promotion Fund support those activities, but we need to find another bucket of money to help make sure that they're safe and that the police and public safety personnel that work so hard to keep us all safe at these events, that they're adequately compensated. And I think that's what's come out of all of this. So I think in the long run, it's our job now to put all these pieces together, and I hope that it'll make your job easier going forward.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Did we, we need a motion?
It's like a motion, Mr. Chairman. I move that we endorse the recommendations that are before us from the Community and Economic Development Committee.
And I second that.
Thank you.
Okay, and those are all of the special event recommendations with the absence of the St. Patrick's Day Parade, which we've already dealt with.
Correct. That's my motion.
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously by a three-to-zero vote with two members absent. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it.
Happy holidays to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Board and committee actions.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Robin Kelly as a regular member of the Board of Registros. This appointment is to fill an unexpired term, which will run through March of 2026.
I'll second that.
She will be the Republican member.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes by a three-zero vote, two members absent. Anything else for appointments? No? Upcoming agenda review.
Do you want to do that at our next meeting?
Yeah, a week from today. We only have three members. Do you want to pass on that, or what?
I'm very comfortable letting the chairman and the administrator work up the agenda for our next meeting.
Our next meeting's going to be the ninth.
The ninth, we've got a couple of big things with the Mattie Keys.
Yeah, we've got some swearing in.
We've got some good discussions going on that day.
Mattie Keys Committee, that'll be a good one.
Yep.
Close the warrant, we got to do that already?
No, we're not going to close the warrant, but we'll go over the timeframe for that.
Yeah, I thought we had like till later in the month for that.
Yeah, we need to get some articles first.
Yeah. It'd be nice to have some articles, especially for an annual.
Well, it's easy to close the warrant if we don't have any articles.
What's the date for, it's early January, isn't it, for petitioned articles?
Yeah, I don't want to throw out a date because I want to check that date, but I'll check it and I'll send out a quick—
I think it's early January. Okay, so we'll work on that one, Bob. I'll meet you on the 25th.
All right, I'll bring some pie.
I'll bring the egg dog, you bring the pumpkin pie, all right?
And the coal.
So, all right, so now we're going to move on to individual items. So I am going to use my individual item time to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and I hope everybody stays healthy, and looks forward to coming back to help us wade through the town's business in January for the next calendar year of 2024. Dorcas, or Mark, do you have anything on—
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think that was very well said, and I just second what you said.
Thank you. Mark?
No, I would, I'll provide a, I'll second it again for a second time.
Okay. You'll third it, you'll third it.
I'll third it.
Okay.
No, I just, what I'd like to do is just take a moment to thank our town team, our town employees, our department heads, and, you know, the folks that sort of work day in and day out. You know, I don't think we can say thank you enough, quite frankly. The folks here work incredibly hard, they take their jobs very seriously, and, you know, it shows, quite frankly, you know, in making travels around the town. You really see it. Police, fire, there've been some big changes there this past year. You look in Town Hall, we've had a number of new folks, and, you know, it's all going in the right direction, and, but it requires people to, you know, make the extra effort to, you know, to step up, and folks have been doing that. So I just want to provide a third to that, but I also want to just add a special thanks to all the town of Yarmouth employees for all of their work on behalf of the people of Yarmouth.
Thank you.
Thanks to the Board of Selectmen also, great boards.
Okay. Town administrator, consent agenda.
Couple of quick items. There is an alcohol license amendment for an ownership interest, which is a matter of form, doesn't require a public hearing. And we also have two donations to the Yarmouth Fire Department from Mary Jane Cole for $120, and an anonymous donation for $100.
Mr. Chairman, I move the consent agenda.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a three-to-zero vote with two members absent.
Okay, and I've got a couple of little update items. I want to assure board members, the budget process continues. We've been extremely busy. I really appreciate having enough time to get that put together. We are on schedule. All of our meetings with the individual departments are completed at this point, and we're going back now to just try to double-check our numbers. As you know, during the early part of the budget, you know, we're usually a couple of million dollars off with all of the requests and things, and I thought the departments all did a great job, and we'll be finished with a budget recommendation. It won't be 100% of everything everyone's looking for, but it'll be a real solid budget, and that'll be ready by the end of this year. We talked about the Board of Health and their migrant housing update. I just, you know, wanted to add, I really appreciated that because I found that as an administrator, I really needed the assistance of the Board of Health to, you know, do a deep dive and have the appropriate medical doctor professionals to advise in terms of the issues surrounding the tuberculosis, and, you know, to find out that there were false rumors that were spread, that there were active cases of tuberculosis that didn't exist. You know, it's a little disappointing to hear that, but it was just great to have the medical community there to provide accurate information, and it's good to see that the Board of Health is going to be continuing in helping with that. I did want to mention on the migrant housing issues that we have become aware, and I know Selectmen Forrest was one of the first people to kind of get wind of a program this December, a program this December, right now, that the state is initiating, that was, um, foreshadowed to us by Secretary Augustus when he visited the town. It indicated that with the capping of the migrant housing program in Massachusetts, that their next step would be to move to consolidate, um, this housing under supervised sites, and, um, we don't need to point out that the Yarmouth site, um, is not supervised in that it is, uh, being managed by the National Guard on deployment. And, um, there, there has been some initial announcements that, um, you know, one of the sites in Bourne, another site in Wareham, are being consolidated under this professional staffing, and I, I just would say, um, it is my expectation, and I certainly hope, and we'll be doing everything that, that we can to, to try to get this information. I, I hope to see, um, Yarmouth a part of that consolidation program as, uh, time unfolds, so, um, we'll, we'll stay very close on that, and I'll keep everyone posted. We, we talked about the airport environmental meeting, uh, a little earlier, and, um, I, I just wanted to point out that, um, we were there, the Town of Yarmouth is a very strong representative, you know, sitting right with all of our Hyannis Park Civic Association, uh, constituents, that, um, you know, we are really trying to assist. You could see, you know, the frustration level among local residents just sort of rising with the inability, uh, of the, the Airport Commission to really take their, um, issues to heart, but there are some core recommendations that the Town of Yarmouth has made that we feel will significantly improve the experience of local residents by adopting, uh, an, an optional instrument departure program that our consultant has already mapped out how it would work, that would allow the planes to take off and set their instruments so that they wouldn't be flying directly over the most highest concentration of local residences like they are now. We find that to be a low-cost, low-risk solution that would have a tremendous benefit for our community, and I, I can say that we are aggressively pursuing that, and I have received some word from, um, the airport management, that, that they, um, will be taking the next steps to move that forward, and, um, I'm disappointed in that, you know, they, they keep hiding behind the minimum requirements of the Federal Aviation Administration, which does not require that, but we were able to clarify, right, at our meeting that, that we had with them, with the FAA sitting right there, that no, it is not a minimum requirement of the FAA, but they certainly support those efforts and, and would be willing to approve them. So, um, I thought we, we made some progress there.
Is there a solution on that, Bob? Instrument, uh, takeoffs?
Yeah, and-
Is that what it is?
Ninety percent of the takeoffs are instrument takeoffs, right? So they're, they're using the instrument takeoffs. It's, it's whether you incorporate a preferred flight plan into that, um, and, and the, they, you know, we, we keep hearing, oh, it's not required, oh, it's up to the pilot. Well, the truth is that it, that it's not. The, it's, it's up to the airport to say that these are our flight parameters. Now, in an emergency, right, or other special circumstances, the pilot certainly, certainly retains the right to alter that flight path for safety. And, you know, but, but the idea is without having a preferred flight path, what we're doing is, is just opening everything up to have every plane go over the residence, and, you know, it's not smart. And, and our, our consultant, you know, has worked with airports around the country on this issue. So I think, you know, we've learned that no, it's not something that is over and above or impossible to do, and, and it could easily be done.
Mr. Chairman, um, as you know, the Barnstable Airport is overseen by an Airport Commission, and the Airport Commission is appointed by the Barnstable Town Council. The Barnstable Town Council is undergoing change. There'll be new leadership, there are new members, um, and it would not surprise me in very short order if the airport is under some added scrutiny. I think, um, and again, maybe we might need to speak with council, but, or consult with council, but, um, I would like to at least propose to the administrator some consideration for our board making a formal request of the Barnstable Town Council to insist on these measures being adopted, uh, by the Airport Commission, and we might as well add this to the conversation. So if the Barnstable Town Council is going to start looking at and scrutinizing some of the decisions of the Airport Commission and some of the airport managers, um, I don't see any reason why we couldn't, um, ask them to insist on these measures being adopted. So we could vote on the measures and take a position, and we could call on the Town of Barnstable, uh, to adopt, uh, these measures as well.
If I could just add a, a point on that, is that, um, that this environmental meeting with MIPA that we attended was obviously at the Barnstable Town Council chambers in, in the Barnstable Town Hall, and, and at that meeting, um, I was personally greeted by a number of members of the Town Council, uh, some new, some, um, that had been on it, and they specifically made it a point to give me a warm welcome and to, to state to me that they were, um, very much interested in the input and feedback from the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen and were anxious, at, at a convenient point, to meet with, um, our community and to, um, you know, work on those issues, and, and I'm also working with our consultant to have, um, you know, some detailed comments, um, that would be suitable for the board to, um, vote upon, that lays forth the, uh, the alternatives and the, and the options to, just to kind of tie it all together.
I think it would be, if I can just, well, doing a, doing a tag team here, um, I, I would welcome a chance for the board to be put on the agenda at a council meeting and to make a presentation of some of these specific recommendations. We're interested in seeing adopted, um, and at the appropriate time. Um, you know, it could be sometime in January, February.
It's great to hear.
But I think it's, with this new board, um, I think it's worth us engaging at that level. I can't, when was, when was the, can anybody remember when the last time the Yarmouth Board met with the Barnstable Council? I can't think I'd ever, I don't think it's ever happened, but I honestly think, just based on, uh, the conversations that I've had with, uh, you know, many of the council members, I think our presence would be well-received, and, um, in hearing what Bob has said, I mean, think about the last time, when was the last time there'd be any interest in hearing what we had to say about the airport before that board? But this may very well be the moment. There may very well be an interest in having a real creative and thoughtful dialogue between the two boards.
And you know, Cape Cod's a small town, it really is, and it, it pays to, um, engage in municipal cooperation when you can. I, I remember when Barnstable had a problem with their water supply, and they came to Yarmouth, and we let them tap into our wells for a number of years, um, and helped them out. So, you know, it's, I'm not saying, you know, it's quid pro quo or anything like that, I'm just saying, when you got a good rapport with your neighbors and you're trying to accommodate them, it's, it, it creates a, a nice climate so that if the need goes the other way, um, they'd be inclined to help you too.
I support that idea, and I find it encouraging.
Very much so. So we'll continue to follow up with that, and I did want to let, um, board members know, we had put up on our website, uh, a copy of the Healy Driscoll press release that I should have got out to all board members first, but I was excited, uh, to, to get it up there, that the town has been awarded a $487,000 park grant to help with our Riverwalk Park project, and, um, so that's just great. We were hoping on those funds. We voted at town meeting to have everything we needed to do in place for it, and when, you know, the, the funds came through, so that's great. And I, I want to let people know that, um, we have advertised that project was funded at the last town meeting, and just in the past week, we've put it out to bid, and there is, and we're going to have a, a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting tomorrow, and filed sub-bids will be due January 17, general contractor bids on January 24. And so, um, that will come, um, in front of us to be approved, uh, probably by early February, um, and we hope to start construction in March of 2024, and that's going to take a year, be done by, by May 30, 2025, um, and we'll keep you posted. It's a big project with those bids to see exactly how things come in, and, um, another big bid that we just finished is, um, bids were due today for the golf, um, improvements on the links course, and we thought that was going to be a $3 million project, and a low bid came in, 2.5 million, so, um, that looks real great, too, and, um, but I'll, I'll keep you posted on all of these, like, different, a few contracts in the, in the works, and happy to keep the information flowing, and it's about it. The, um, we've made another submission to DEP on, uh, groundwater discharge, and, um, they were really great. They, um, outreach me, already were setting a meeting to sit down and talk about it. Of course, you know, we'll have to see if everyone's smiling when we sit down, but, but I, I, it's great to see all of the correspondence and things like that, that, you know, DEP is, they've got us on their radar, and let's hope we can resolve some of these issues.
Very good.
Anybody else? Have a motion or adjourn?
Chairman, I would like to move to adjourn.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
And a happy holiday to all.
Thank you.